Okay, we're ready to get started. Okay, I'm going to call the special meeting of the city council to order. I'll note that all members of the city council are present for roll call. And this evening, we'll be working on the mid-year budget review. And so I want to hand this over to staff to start the workshop. So who wants to lead off?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Staff, and members of the audience. Tonight, I'm here to present the fiscal year 2023-24 mid-year budget review. So we're going to start with a summary of recommended changes to the budget. So the total requests this year were just over 1.5 million. With transfers from other expense accounts, we were able to reduce that to 680,000. So they'll still get their increased budgets, but we just found ways to move some money around. So for the City Council, City Manager, Administrative Services, and Human Services Department, we had no changes. For the Police Department, Administration Small Equipment, they requested a new coffee maker. Their is 10 years old and has a lot of calcium buildup. And the cost to fix it would be more than, you know, wouldn't be worth it to fix it at this point. They requested $1,000. We're, City Manager recommended is $500. We're going to transfer those funds from Administration Regular Earnings and Administration Miscellaneous Expenditures, so there will be no effect on the general fund. Administration Cellular Phone Expense. They recently did cellular service plans for the Command Staff's department laptops. And they will also, which wasn't included in the budget. And they've also been getting some new phones that weren't in the budget. And they're going to be getting some 25 new in-car cameras that will also require cellular service. They requested $7,000. City Manager recommended a $7,000. Were able to transfer that from Administration Regular Earnings, so no effect to the general fund. Support Services Overtime. They've had several vacancies in the department, so they've had to, been ongoing recruitment, pre-employment investigations, and also investigations for other city departments. They're requesting $10,000. We're recommending $5,000, and that will be transferred from Support Services Part-Time Wages. Technical Services Overtime. One of the department sergeants is assigned to Technical Services and Emergency Preparedness. And the overtime is paid 50/50. The sergeant is responsible for providing support services in the areas of purchasing and maintaining vehicles, radios, and other equipment. And this account is over expended. They requested $5,000. I'm sorry, they requested 10,000 total. $5,000 of that will be transferred from Technical Services Part-Time Wages, so that we have $5,000 effect on the general fund budget. Records Part-Time Wages. The Records Bureau is budgeted for two part-time data entry clerks. They had a vacancy at the beginning of the fiscal year, and they have been working extra hours to get caught up on a backlog of citations that, because they've been short-staffed. They're requesting $12,000. We are recommending $12,000, and we will be able to transfer that from Records Regular Earnings. Records Overtime. The two newly hired Police Services Specialists, they had finished training, and they also had some vacancies. So they've had to do overtime to get caught up with the backlog of the police reports. So they were requesting $82,000. We are recommending $82,000. $40,000 will be transferred from Records Regular Earnings, and $42,000 will be transferred from Investigations Regular Earnings. Records Office Supplies. The Records Bureau requires various crime reports, report forms, and forms for traffic enforcement programs. And the county and the state require changes to these forms, so they had to order new forms. $2,000 is requested. $2,000 is recommended. Investigations Range Supplies. Recently, the department got new firearms, which required new ammunition. So to continue to, the training for these new firearms, they had to get extra ammunition. They're requesting $8,000. We're recommending $5,800. $2,200 of that will be transferred from Investigations Data Processing, and the other 3,600 will be transferred from Investigations Regular Earnings. Uniform Patrol Overtime. Due to several unfilled vacancies in patrol during the first half of the fiscal year, this account is over expended. They're requesting $485,000. $160,000 of that will be transferred from Uniform Patrol, and $325,000 will be transferred from Fund 1149, which is the COPS LEAS grant. Uniform Patrol Gasoline. This account is getting close to being over expended. They're spending on average $10,700 a month. They requested $5,000. We're recommending $5,000. Uniform Patrol Personnel Training. Members of City Manager, members of Command Staff, and Police Department Supervisors had attended a week-long post-approved team-building workshop. This budget, this workshop was not in the budget. However, we will receive, most of it reimbursed by post. They're requesting a $10,000 increase. We're recommending a $5,000 increase. Communications Part-Time Wages. The department has two part-time dispatchers who assist with answering requests for emergency services. And while dispatch has been short-staffed, the relief has been filling in when needed. They're requesting a $10,000 increase. We're recommending a $10,000 increase. That will be transferred from Communications Regular Earnings. Communications Overtime. Due to vacancies throughout the fiscal year, this account is now over expended. These vacancies require backfill to ensure minimum shift coverage is maintained. The department is hopeful to hire two full-time entry-level dispatchers by the end of February, which will help with the overtime. They requested $80,000 increase. We're recommending an $80,000 increase, and that will be transferred from Communications Regular Earnings. Communications Special Contract Services. This account covers the cost of the department's contract with language line services for foreign language translation, for non-emergency over-the-phone interpretation services. They need an increase in this area. They're requesting a $5,000 increase. $5,000 is recommended, and this will be coming from the SB 509 Public Safety Fund. So for the Police Department, the only effect to the general fund is $12,000 with all the transfers from other programs and other funds. The Fire Department. Administration Overtime. Due to the creation of the Fire Chief and Assistant Fire Chief positions, a vacancy at the Battalion Chief rank was created. A request was approved to allow the Assistant Fire Chief to work as a Battalion Chief to reduce the workload on the two remaining Battalion Chiefs. There was nothing budgeted for this item. They are requesting $30,000. We are recommending $30,000, and that will be transferred from Emergency Services Regular Earnings. Emergency Services Overtime. Due to unfilled vacancies, medical leave, and emergency callback, mandatory backfilling of key positions is required in order to prevent shortfalls in the Fire Department's minimum deployment levels. They are requesting $500,000. We are recommending $460,000. That will be transferred from Emergency Services Regular Earnings. Emergency Services Uniforms. Uniforms were purchased for one new firefighter, and with the anticipation of hiring five new firefighters and one engineer to fill current vacancies and the restoration of the medic squad, additional funds are requested. They requested $22,000. We're recommending $13,000, and that will be transferred from Emergency Services Regular Earnings, so there is no effect to the general fund for the Fire Department increases. Public Works Department. Graffiti Abatement Materials Maintenance Repair. Due to an increase in graffiti throughout the city and the increased cost of paint and supplies, this account is 98% expended. The expenses in this account are paid by CDBG, but there are no additional CDB funding available. The general fund will take on this increase. They're requesting $15,000. We're recommending $15,000, and that will be transferred from Graffiti Abatement Regular Earnings. Street Maintenance Overtime. The overtime budget for the street maintenance is over expended. They're requesting $20,000. We're recommending $20,000, and that will be transferred from Street Maintenance Regular Earnings. Street Maintenance Uniforms. This account is over expended. They're requesting $3,500. We're recommending $3,500, and this will come from the gas tax fund. Street Maintenance Special Contract Services. Due to unexpected tree trimming in out-of-grid areas and vandalized median island irrigation parts, this account is 77% expended. An increase to the initial appropriations requested to complete the grid four tree trimming, the remaining monthly contract with Colts Landscaping and Street Striping on Benito, Palo Verde, and five intersections for safety purposes. They requested $58,000, but since we added the street striping, we're recommending $110,000, and this will come from the gas tax fund. Signing and Painting Overtime. This account is over expended due to work on the Flashing Stop Sign Project, Holiday Ornament Install and Removal, and Chamber and Military Banner Installs. They're requesting $2,500 increase. We're recommending a $2,500 increase, which will be transferred from Signing and Painting Regular Earnings. Park Maintenance Overtime. This account is over expended due to ballfield preparation, opening and closing the parks on weekends, and Human Services events. They're requesting $39,000 increase. We're recommending $28,000, which will be transferred from Park Maintenance Regular Earnings. Excuse me. Park Maintenance Materials Miscellaneous Maintenance and Repair. To date, this account is 72% expended. Since the Park Maintenance Fund is low on funds, any approved increase would come from the general fund. They're requesting a $5,000 increase. We're recommending $3,500. That will be transferred from Park Maintenance Regular Earnings. Irrigation Maintenance Overtime. No funds were budgeted for irrigation maintenance overtime. Due to emergency irrigation repairs, overtime was needed. They're requesting $7,000. We're recommending $6,000, which will be transferred from Street Maintenance Regular Earnings. Irrigation Maintenance Materials Miscellaneous Maintenance and Repair. Due to the unexpected replacement of backflow devices at Fire Station 152 and the Trans Center, this account is 89% expended. They are requesting a $10,000 increase. We're recommending a $4,000 increase, and that will be transferred from Street Maintenance Regular Earnings. Vehicle Maintenance Materials Transportation and Work Equipment. To date, this account is 64% expended. A new transmission is needed for Police Unit 415 in addition to other materials. $15,000 increase is requested. $15,000 is recommended. That will be transferred from Street Maintenance Regular Earnings. Vehicle Maintenance Gasoline. Due to the increase of the price per gallon of gas, this account is 70% expended. They're requesting $27,000. We're recommending $27,000. That will be transferred from Park Maintenance Regular Earnings. Vehicle Maintenance Compressed Natural Gas. The addition of the new CNG sewer track has increased the usage of CNG. They're requesting a $10,000 increase. We're recommending $7,000 increase, which will be transferred from Park Maintenance Regular Earnings. Building Maintenance Overtime. Due to removing the Police Department Shooting Range Targeting System, installing new electrical circuits in the shooting range, and removing cubicles from City Hall, this account is 85% expended. They're recommending, I'm sorry, requesting a $4,000 increase. We're recommending a $4,000 increase, which will be transferred from Building Maintenance Part-Time Wages. Building Maintenance Uniforms. To date, this account is 92% expended, and they're requesting a $2,500 increase. We're recommending a $1,000 increase. $500 of that increase will be transferred from Building Maintenance Program Supplies. Building Maintenance Materials Buildings. Due to the unexpected replacement of the UV light system on the splash pad, wind damage to a light pole on Alamo Hoffa Park, vandalism of five glass panels at the EOC, and window coverings in tent in City Hall, this account is 75% expended. They're requesting $62,446. We're recommending $50,000. Heating and Air Conditioning Materials Miscellaneous Maintenance and Repair. Due to unexpected repairs to heating and air conditioning units, this account is over expended. The CCN control system at City Hall also needs replacement. They're requesting $30,557. We're recommending $30,557. The overall effect to the general fund is $81,057. Community Development. Administration Office Equipment Furniture. The current budget included $5,000 for creating and furnishing a new conference room within the department. The majority of the projects is complete, but actual expenses exceeded the estimated cost. The requested amount will cover the additional material costs and the new furnishings needed to complete the project. They're requesting $7,500. We're recommending $7,500, and that will be transferred from Plan Check Regular Earnings. Fire Prevention Special Contract Services. California Health and Safety Code Section 1314 6.4 requires annual fire inspections of multifamily residential hotels, motels, lodging houses, and public and private schools. The contracted fire prevention inspectors are only inspecting new construction. In order to meet the state mandated requirements, an additional contracted fire inspector is needed. They're requesting $47,375. We're recommending $47,375, and that will be transferred from Plan Check Regular Earnings, so there will be no effect to the general fund. The Economic Development Department had no changes. City Attorney Department had no changes. Citywide. Personnel Services Workers' Compensation Claims. Due to unanticipated workers' compensation claims, this account is over expended. We're requesting an increase of $250,000 and recommending an increase of $250,000. Services and Supplies Electrical Service. Due to the increased cost of electricity, additional funding is requested. We're requesting and recommending $100,000. Services and Supplies General City Insurance. The estimate for General City Insurance was higher than anticipated and received after the budget process. We're requesting and recommending $237,000 increase for a total of $587,000 affecting the general fund. So now we'll look at our statement of general fund expenditures. So for the most part, each department is either just under 50% or just over 50% expended at the six-month point, so we're doing pretty good. And the overall for the entire city, we're at 54% expended for the first six months of the fiscal year. And now we'll look at our general fund revenues. So right now, for our estimates for the rest of the fiscal year, we're increasing property taxes by $300,000. Our sales tax, we're reducing by $600,000 because the estimates, especially from HDL, are being lowered. The transaction and use tax, about $125,000 for both of those reduction. Document Transfer Tax Reduction of $35,000. Business License up about $25,000 for a negative effect of $279,061. Our licenses and permits, we're anticipating an increase of $165,000. Intergovernmental Rvenues, $5,000 increase. Fines and forfeitures, a $5,000 increase. Charges for services, we're seeing a negative impact of $58,225. Miscellaneous revenue, an increase of $260,000. For an overall general fund, total revenue increase of $97,714. Now we'll look at our general operating fund analysis. So the increases into revenue that we're anticipating are $97,714, while our increase to expenses is $680,057. So we have a deficit of $582,343. For our fiscal impact and recommendation, revising the city's appropriations budget increases the spending authority by $680,057 in the general operating fund. Revising the city's estimated revenue budget has a total positive impact to the general operating fund of $97,714. Approval of both the appropriations and estimated revenues budgets would have a negative budgetary impact to the general operating fund of $582,343. It is anticipated that actual revenue increases if, you know, our estimates are off, reduced departmental spending, and if needed, transfers from reserves will fund this negative budgetary impact. Staff recommends the city council consider the city's mid-year budget review documents and approve proposed changes to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. And we'll answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Just a question on the sales tax. So I understand the sales taxes are starting to get flat now, Ed?
Well, they're flat, but they're also running in a negative. I think the last report we had was 7% below our previous quarter a year ago.
Okay, so we'll see what the next quarter is, and that's the holiday quarter.
The next quarter is the holiday quarter. We should know within the next two months.
Okay. And I assume that when we say flat, I mean, the negative 7% that impacts the two measures that we have, the board's measures.
Well, it does, but their performance was actually better than general revenues related to the Bradley Burns Sales Tax. So the transaction use taxes are dependent on issues that the general fund tax, the Bradley Burns tax, is not dependent on, particularly the sale of vehicles outside of the city limits. So those had a more positive effect for the city.
Okay. And on the Police Department's Uniform Patrol overtime of $485,000. And then what is this COPS LEAS grant fund? $325,000, is that a one-time grant? I don't recall hearing about this in the past. Maybe I forgot it, or someone can explain that to me?
Well, that's a recurring grant. We just don't know at the beginning of the year sometimes how much money is going to be funded into it. So we find out after the course, during the course of the year, what amount of money we might be receiving from the state. If the chief wants to speak about it further, that's up to him.
All right, so it just so happens we have $325,000 available in that account to offset the overtime pay. And then as far as the citywide, so workers' comp claims are higher than originally budgeted for. And then electrical prices, no surprise, have gone up in the last one year. So obviously, that's a cost that will remain as-is for the future. And then, of course, General City Insurance is also up, and that's a cost that I believe will continue on in the future as we forward. And then basically, the $587,000 of these three accounts is what the deficit is for the most part.
Yes, that is the real impact on the general fund. In fact, I just heard that our insurance rates should increase significantly next year as well.
Okay. So as you stated, the insurance cost, the electrical cost will continue to remain as-is, escalate or escalate even further as in the case of General City Insurance. So I appreciate that, and I'll ask, let me see, Mayor, I hope Tim Jones has got some questions.
Well, actually, one of my questions was just answered, but the other question I had is a curiosity question. And Ms. Kobek, I'm not sure if it's your answer or if it's Ms. Haredi or City Manager Stur's question. But it's regarding a comment that's on page 14 about vandalized median island irrigation parts that were stolen. So are they part of this copper craze that's going on? Why, what can people do with them? And moreover, what can we do to stop them from being stolen in the future?
Well, Ms. Haredi is making her way up, but yes, you're right as far as the copper craze. But more importantly, oftentimes, it is landscapers who are taking them for landscape projects that they're working on. So it's easier to take it from us than to go in the store and buy it.
Wow, wow.
Yeah, it is, okay. Yeah, the material is very valuable. It's copper or some kind of metal that even homeless can actually take as well and sell it to get money. So it's a different kinds of vandalism. But so what we're doing is we are replacing them with plastic material.
Thank you.
That's it?
That concludes my questions.
Mr. Lopez.
Is my mic on good? I had a follow-up with respect to that, sorry. I was, in case you were going to go that way with questions, I was going to ask to interject on this one, so you wouldn't have to come back up multiple times.
No worries.
Did we put that page on the screen? Is it already there? Yeah, it is, okay. It mentions the median island. Are we mainly talking Central Avenue?
No, mostly Holt and Mission.
Yeah, and just to be clear, it says median island here, but oftentimes, in past years, it's been the parks that have been vandalized.
Okay, so they're stealing the metal products.
Saratoga in particular gets vandalized all the time.
Well, you said we're going to go to plastic. Now they're stealing all the metal material, which is...
Controllers, valves, whatever.
Durable. So by using plastic, then, are we going to have to, obviously, I would assume, we're going to have to replace that more frequently than we would the metal products?
Possibly.
Well, actually, if I may say, no, because the copper gets stolen on a regular basis. They're not going to steal the plastic. So the plastic is probably likely to have a much longer endurance period than the copper does.
Well, and that's what I was just getting at, is just the natural wear and tear of the product itself. Obviously, the metal would last longer, but anyhow, all right. I appreciate it.
In the long run, it's...
Metal in play very long, though. The plastic will just turn out to be better.
It's also commercial grade, so it's not once you get in your yard, it's a heavier commercial grade.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haredi.
Are we, Mr. Mayor, did you yield the floor to me? Okay, I do have a couple more questions. Let's go to page 10, please. Let's find my notes. Concerning the conference for the Police Department, if it is likely that the expenses will be reimbursed to the city, I'm assuming in full, why just the recommendation for a $5,000 allocation rather than the 10?
We pore over the requests that departments submit. We look at the available funding in the budgets. We look at the length of period of time remaining in the year. We look at the history of expenditures. And we oftentimes find that sometimes departments over anticipate what their costs are going to be. Our objective is to bring it down to what, or to allow for that, or to put it at a number that we think is more realistic, and that's what we did here.
Do you know offhand what the expense was? I'm assuming this is an annual conference.
No, it was a one-time request for a team-building workshop that the Police Department had a couple of weeks ago. And not all of it, but a good portion of it will be reimbursed to the city. But even taking that into consideration, it's our perspective at this point in time that $5,000 is sufficient to carry the department through for the balance of the year.
Okay. Page 14, please. Signing and Painting Overtime. The brief description mentions the installation of Chamber and Military banners. I do know that the banners themselves, other than the military, some of them are paid for by private parties, correct? Some of them?
Yes, but not the installation.
Right.
The military banners that are being installed are, the city pays for those as well out of the CAC budget. But they're talking about installing them on the poles.
On the poles. What I'm getting at is, if I recall correctly, for an individual that's retired, is a Montclair resident, chooses to have a banner up, they have to pay a small fee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, but those that are active duty do not.
Right.
Because that's what I was getting at, the differential. Now, I believe the Chamber banners, the sponsorship is 500 for each, correct?
That is the advertised rate, but there are some discounts depending on...
Quantity?
Quantity.
Sure, sure, I get it. My concern, well, my question, not concern, strike that. My question is, the funds that we charge private parties or individuals for these banners, does it not offset some of the costs that we're having to incur here?
No, it doesn't. The revenues related to the Chamber Commerce go to the Chamber Commerce. They don't come back to the city of Montclair. And the military banners, as you already indicated, are a service that the city provides, for the most part at no cost, to the members who are serving.
Okay, all right. Now, on the sales tax issue, how does, forgive me, if my memory serves me correctly, during the onset of COVID, we received a chunk of funds issued to us from the county, if I'm not mistaken, for online purchase taxation. Online, so there's a certain allocation or a percentage of, for individuals that shop online?
Okay, you're talking about the county pool. The county pool is not a grant of funds from the county. When purchases are made online from out of state, the use tax from those out-of-state purchases go into the county pool, and then they're distributed to cities based on their sales tax performance.
So in effect, that allocation from the county pool is going to be less negatively impacted by the anticipated 7% below projected revenues that we're experiencing?
Well, in fact, the county pool will actually demonstrate worse performance over the course of the next several years unless something is done at the state level to correct a very major concern throughout the state of California. Right now, what is happening is that there are approximately 39 cities in the state of California that have an excess of available land. And they are attracting these businesses, particularly Amazon and other large online retailers, to their cities by offering them property tax shares. property tax sharing agreements. When those businesses locate in their cities and they open up warehouses and distribution centers and fulfillment centers, the agreement is that in exchange for typically 50%, sometimes up to 75% of the taxes that are generated over the course of what is often a 50-year period, those businesses will get that money, that 50% or 75% rebated in the sales tax, in exchange for designating that city that they located in as the situs for all sales. So for example, when a person in Montclair purchases something online, and it is shipped to them from the city of Ontario, Montclair is not the situs. We don't get the sales tax from that. It all stays in Ontario, and then Ontario splits that sales tax, depending on the language in the property tax sharing agreement, with that particular business, typically Amazon, since they're the largest online retailer in the US, 50%, 75%, whatever the language is in that sales tax sharing agreement. From Ontario's perspective, or the perspective of whatever one of these 39 cities that does this, they're getting some sales tax money, even though they're sharing it, they weren't getting that sales tax money before, so they're happy, and in 50 years, they'll get 100% of it, or 75 years, whatever the language is. And in the meantime, the other 438 cities in the state of California are going to be suffering as these county pools see a drop-down in the available revenue related to online sales. So when I say that the state needs to address it, the state needs to figure out what is better for the state of California. Is it that 39 cities reap the reward of all these online sales, which is becoming a bigger share of all sales tax generation in the state? I believe the last time I looked, online sales were around 27%, and they're only going to go up? Or are they going to address this so the other 438 cities in the state of California receive an equitable share of that revenue? Because we provide services, even though the warehouses or fulfillment centers are not located in Montclair or the other 437 cities, we provide the roadways and all of the other services related to Amazon and all of these other companies that use those roadways to provide delivery of those products. So it isn't just the fact that that one city is providing all of the services, the utilities, the police, the fire services, we're all sharing in that, and we all should share in the pool. But until the state generates a solution to this, we're going to see that pool go down.
All right. That's all for now, Mr. Mayor. I can't think of anything at the moment unless something pops up.
All right, thank you. All right, Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. This is asked to the general city insurance item on page 20. Is the city's rate competitive? Do we check that it's competitive every so often? And then also, is the increase in that rate a typical increase that's happening across the board in other cities, or is that because of unanticipated litigation?
Well, that is a complex question, and you answered a lot of it at the very end with your statement that it is directly tied to our liability-related issues, and we have a number of very significant cases that SEPA, the insurance pool authority that we are a member of, is looking at, and they're saying that based on the exposure related to those cases, Montclair's insurance rate has to go up because of the likelihood that SEPA will have to cover a significant share of the cost. As you may know, our SIR is at $500,000. Anything below $500,000, we're responsible for. Anything above $500,000, SEPA is responsible for, and the cases that SEPA is looking at have the potential of liabilities way beyond the $500,000 mark. So they're planning for that, and we can expect increases. The fact that the, we have the increases this year is also related to the fact that SEPA has had to cover some liabilities related to the city's experiences. So as it relates to whether or not this is the best cost, SEPA is a insurance pool that only local government agencies can participate in. The city, prior to joining SEPA about 10 years ago, always had private insurance, and when we made the transition to SEPA, the difference was significant, so significant that we are still of the opinion that if we were out on the private insurance market, our costs would be way in excess of what we're experiencing right now. So we are of the belief that remaining in SEPA is to the best interests of the city. Plus, we have a provision with SEPA that even though our SIR is at $500,000, when we are ready to make the transition back, we can go back to a 250,000, or 200,000 SIR. We're only one of two cities in SEPA that have that right to do that. The other cities that are in SEPA came in after SEPA raised the SIR to 500,000 for everyone. Some cities are even beyond the 500,000, some are at 750,000 and even higher, but we have the flexibility of going back to the 250,000 once we think the insurance rates are at a point where we can expect that we're not going to be severely impacted by going back to the $250,000, and our liabilities out there aren't a significant burden to us.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Rue.
Yes, thank, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have really just two, one question and a comment. Question is on property tax. The, I don't have it in front of me, it doesn't matter. There was something about we would be increasing our property tax by over $300,000 this year. Where is that increase coming from? I mean, I know it's increase in property tax, but where?
It's coming from all of the development that has occurred over the city during the course of the last several years. We don't often find out for a couple of years how that's, excuse me, how that's going to impact property taxes, but during the course of the year, when we start seeing a rise in the property taxes, we can attribute to a particular project.
Okay, I was thinking a lot of it with the development of the Mission Tiki, that's what I'll call it.
Yeah, we won't realize that probably until 2027 or so.
Okay. And then a comment Councilman Lopez brought up about the sales tax issue, and it was a very good question, and I know most of us here have talked about this. If you go back far enough, there was a time when, in California or anywhere else, when you ordered something from a catalog, and think of your internet sales as a catalog, that's what it is. It just says Amazon or whatever. But I remember my mother ordering from the Montgomery Ward, the Sears &amp; Roebuck, the Spiegel catalog, and all of those things. There used to be a section, and you'd look, you'd find your state, California, that every city listed, and it would say what the sales tax rate is. So you would buy your goods, and it came up to $10, the sales tax rate is 5%. You added it in there, and you sent it off, and that city received that portion of the sales tax. With computers, you'd think they'd be able to do that today, it would be much easier. The argument somebody will make is, well, I'm sitting in my office in San Diego, and I really, I'm only here two days a week, I really live in Montclair, so do I order it for my office? Well, I get all that, but we solved it years ago with catalogs. I think that would be the way to go. Just put in, type in 91763, the sales tax pops up, that's what you pay, and that money aggregates back to the city. That's just, I think, a very simple way to do it. Thank you.
Right, but unfortunately, right now, the way that it's structured is that when Amazon locates into a city, they say, this is the point of sale, and that's where all the sales tax stay. So where you live no longer has anything to do with it.
I'm saying we solved some of it years ago because it was very easy. I worked at Montgomery Ward in, here in Montclair, and you'd see that was the point of sale, but people came in, ordered from the catalog, I know, I worked there a few times, and they would put their sales thing in as 917, I don't know, 111. And that's where it was sent to their home, and that's where they paid, so we have to look at a change.
Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
A follow-up, please, on the sales tax issue. What about car sales from the dealerships?
Our sales are based on where the vehicle is registered.
Okay.
So if you buy a car outside of Montclair and it's registered to Montclair, then the sales tax comes to Montclair.
Okay. And are we, do you know, are we seeing a decrease in car sales recently or an uptick in them?
Well, the transactions use tax is demonstrating a better performance than the general Bradley Burn sales tax, so that would indicate that Montclair residents are buying, whether or not they're buying in Montclair, buying outside of Montclair, that I can't tell you, but they are buying vehicles at a better clip than they're buying other general service products.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does it sound like we have any more questions or comments? So can I get a motion for approval of the mid-year budget?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the mid-year budget, excuse me, as presented this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and second on the floor by Mr. Rue and Mayor Proton Johnson. It's adopted at 5:0. Do we have any members of the public that wish to speak as an opportunity? City clerk, is anybody out here or on Zoom land?
Mr. Mayor, just a comment. Thank you to staff on finding $700,000 in the various accounts to offset some of these requests to minimize what would actually come out of the general fund. So I was most impressed and pleased with that. So thank you to staff and each department, or finance and the city manager's office.
Okay, so city clerk, do you have anything? Anybody want to speak to us? Nobody want to speak to us? Okay, we adjourn.